Good evening and welcome to this, the November 24th meeting in the Livermore City Council. I call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barry Antos?
Here.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Vice Mayor Branning's absent excused. Mayor Marshon?
Here. If you'd please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance, two flags of the United States of America.
And to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to, we have a report from the Beautification Committee, an update by Tom Bradley. Mr. Bradley, welcome.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and City Council, my name is Tom Bradley. I am the Chair of the City Livermore Beautification Committee. It is my pleasure to present an annual report of our 2025 activities to you. Firstly, I would like to acknowledge the rest of the Beautification Committee and thank them for their great contributions this year. Ron Kraft, Vice Chair, Anne Brown, Committee Member, Karen Jefferson, Committee Member, John Stein, Committee Member, Andrew Wong, Committee Member, and Kat Weiss, Committee Member. And we would also, as a committee, like to thank the city staff liaisons, Maurice DeGan, Joe Prime, and Becky Aguilera for all their hard work keeping us running smoothly, and the rest of the city employees that have worked with us this year and helped us achieve our goals. The major accomplishments this year of the committee, firstly, the Arbor Day 2025 activities. An ad hoc committee was formed to oversee Arbor Day celebrations for 2025. That consisted of myself, Committee Member Anne Brown, and Committee Member John Stein. And we coordinated several events for the Arbor Day 2025 activities. Firstly, there was a My Favorite Tree Art and Poetry Celebration, which was led by Anne Brown, and partnered with LARPD Open Space, and Giancola of Livermore Arts, Peggy Schimmelmann, Livermore Poet Laureate, and Anne McFarland, Livermore, from Livermore Library, to produce the first My Favorite Tree Celebration in Sycamore Grove Park. Publicity for this event was created through the city's social media, numerous email lists, public calendar listings, postings on Peachjar for Livermore Valley Joint Unified School District parents, newspaper press releases, and more. In total, we had 41 entries through our entry form and email submissions. And artists and poets ranged in age from eight years to 80-plus. And we had some pictures there on the previous slide from that event. The committee also collaborated with City Public Works to provide a donated tree for planting in the Springtown Open Space. The planting was attended by Committee Members Anne Brown and Ron Kraft. And we did have some pictures up there, I think, on a different slide. You can see Councilmember Wong was also there to lend a helping hand to in planting that tree. And then finally, for Arbor Day, I coordinated with Livermore Valley Joint Unified School District in providing 19 donated trees across the 11 school campuses in Livermore. Great to see students getting hands-on experience and helping to plant the trees. As you can see here with students, we have from East Avenue Middle School and Junction Avenue. It was a really successful event. Our next accomplishment for 2025, we compiled us, an ad hoc committee was put together, and we discussed a proposed street tree replacement list in collaboration with City Public Works. This was a great collaboration between the committee and the city. And we were able to finalize a list of recommended replacements, which I believe is going to be available soon via the website. Next, we participated in Community Service Day. Committee members volunteered at several different sites for Community Service Day, which comprised of many different tasks, planting, mulching, cleaning, et cetera. Committee Member Wong also identified an illegal dumping hotspot on South Front Road between Vasco Road and Commerce, and was able to organize a successful cleanup at this site for Community Service Day. So we have some pictures there from some of the events we were involved in, too. And then finally, combating illegal dumping. So Committee Member Wong presented ideas on how to prevent illegal dumping and improve community outreach about how to correctly dispose of bulky items. The committee is in the final stages of posting some new signage at sites across the city, again, in collaboration with City Public Works, that we have identified as illegal dumping hotspots, which will hopefully deter further dumping and educate the community on how waste can be properly disposed of. And I just want to take a second to recognize the efforts of Committee Member Wong, too, and the countless hours of his own time and resources he invests, not only in our community, but across the Bay Area, cleaning up many illegal dumping sites. He monitors them for further dumping and coordinates everything that he collects. All the trash he collects is disposed of by the appropriate resource. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. So that concludes the 2025 Beautification Committee Updates and Accomplishments.
Any questions for Mr. Bradley? Okay, certainly.
As of a quick comment to clarify, because the mayor thanked me for the legal dumping, that wasn't me. It's Committee Member Wong and Councilmember Wong. No relation, but I know him as a great guy, super appreciate everything he does. So I want to make sure he gets the appropriate recognition and that doesn't get directed to me.
Committee Member Wong as opposed to Councilmember Wong, okay. And yes, I've actually seen him out there abiding letters. So certainly, my thanks to Committee Member Wong. All right, well, great. Well, thank you very much. And now you're going to do the Beautification Awards.
I am, correct. We're going to, we're going to transition into the 2025 Beautification Awards, which is another accomplishment of the Beautification Committee. It's something we do every year. So an ad hoc committee was created to oversee the 2025 Beautification Awards. The Beautification Award brochure was revised this year to expand the reach and the criteria of the awards and encourage more applicants to apply. The purpose of the awards is to recognize properties that improve curb appeal, recognize drought-tolerant landscape renovations, promote creativity and community pride within our city, and encourage citizen participation in beautifying Livermore. So this year, we had a total of nine applicants from across the city, with seven of these applicants winning awards. So now I'm going to just read a list of the properties that we awarded this year. And then at the end, I'd like to ask them to come up, and we're going to present them with a sign that they can put in their yard. So the first award was presented to 5354 Saunders Way. And this award was presented because they created a habitat for pollinators, butterflies, and other wildlife. As you can see there, it's a very lush yard. The next award was presented to 604 Hazel Street. This yard is now fully drought tolerant and relies solely on the weather and deep root systems from native plants for their watering needs. The next award was presented to 657 Rich Press Circle. They installed low water and low maintenance plants to reduce their water consumption. The next award goes to 787 South J Street. They installed a Water Smart Garden that complements the 1920s historic home. The next award goes to 360 McLeod Street. And they used as many natural materials as possible, such as wooden gates and stone walkways, to honor the 100-year-old home. The next award goes to 421 South Livermore Avenue. They transformed their 73-year-old home with new paint and roof, complemented by new landscape and a redwood fence. And the final award for 2025 was given to 2359 Hampton Road. And they removed their front lawn and planted mostly native plants, and they have a water-wise landscape now, too. So I'd like to invite those winners, if they're present, to come up and accept their yard sign. Sure. Maybe you could all come over this way. We'll get you in front of the dais. So that concludes the 2025 activities from the Beautification Committee. Thank you for your time.
Well, and thank you very much for working hard to keep our community beautiful. Thank you. With that, we're going to move on to 3.3, which is the Livermore Valley Wine Heritage District. I believe we've got an update from Brandy Lombardi. Oh, there she is. How are you doing? Executive Director of the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for allowing us to have a few minutes to celebrate with you just this exciting year that we've had with the Wine Heritage District. I'd be remiss to not also thank some of your staff that work hand-in-hand with us, Brandon Cardwell, Teresa de la Vega, and Jake Potter. So we're very grateful for their partnership. 2025, 2024, 2025 Annual Report was super exciting. I want to just take your whole night and tell you all about it, but I only have a couple of slides because I don't want to break the rules. So here we go. So first, I want to just quickly remind everybody why this was formed. We have come from an era where giant festivals of wine, wine-centric folks coming into the town just aren't what people are looking for anymore. They want a more experiential, intimate experience. So those large events started to decrease our income to the point where it became necessary to find a new funding model to sustain wine country here. The Wine Heritage District was the answer to that problem for us. We also felt like it could create spaces for communication for all of our stakeholders to have a seat at the table. And it gave us the structure to do that, since we didn't quite have as many opportunities in the structure we were in beforehand. One of the biggest challenges we had prior to having the Wine Heritage District, and the reason we requested and fought and just worked so hard to get it formed, was we had all the dreams, the passions, the strategies, but didn't have the funds to make it happen, to make sure that Livermore Valley Wine Country was not the best-kept secret in the Bay Area. So bringing in the Wine Heritage District back in 2021 provided that sustainable fundraising, and that's why we needed it and are so grateful that we have it. Moving into today, I'm happy to say we are in the fifth year of our Wine Heritage District, our final year of this season in this particular management district plan. And a lot has happened. I can't go into every single thing we've done, but I know that our annual report is public record, so I hope that you take the time to look and see all the great things. But a couple of big highlights is we worked with David Halbert's office to create the Global AVA, which is, the Global AVA stands for Global Artisan Ventners Alliance. And we are so excited that we have now 11 partners around the world that are boutique wine regions that have similar terroirs, similar climates, so we can connect. We meet on Zoom every other month to learn best practices. We have done sustainability, marketing, farming practices, really from hearing from experts around the world, which has been very exciting. This year, Livermore was able to host the very first ever in-person summit, the first summit here in Livermore. And some of you were there in attendance, and we were so glad to have you as our guest for that. We have just heard from our Global AVA new executive director that our next summit is in March, which will be in Budapest in Croatia. So we're very excited for all of our partners to be part of that and be really excited about that. Some metrics I wanted to share with you is back when we formed the Wine Heritage District, our mission and strategy that we had was to infiltrate Silicon Valley with strategic marketing and include 60-mile radius around Livermore to make sure no one in that 60-mile radius was someone who didn't hear about us or didn't know that a wine country was right here. In the course of those four years, four and a half, that we have been using the Wine Heritage District funds to market that area, I'm happy to say that on our social media impressions in that geographic target, we are up 75% from when we started. We also, for engagements, are up 107%. It's super exciting to think that it's working. People are clicking our ads, they're clicking our social media. We also had, as I put on the slide, a 200% increase in visitors from that geographical area in Silicon Valley and San Jose come to our signature event Taste, the Livermore Valley Wine Experience, which is a huge, huge sign. It's hard to know who comes in and why they come in and who's visiting, but that's a metric that we can actually count on, that's from our ticket sales that we can track ourselves. We also were able to, one of our biggest tenants of the Wine Heritage District is to raise and elevate the quality of wines here. That's it. We're so excited to be an award-winning, world-class wine region. And with that, our Wine Quality Enhancement and Education Committee has started a cost-share program and partnered with two local labs. So then if wineries and vineyards have their grapes tested, their wine tested, we are able to help share the burden of that cost to encourage them to do that. So there's so many great programs. I really could go on and on, but I want to be really mindful of the time. But I also wanted to make sure that we did not miss the last bullet point, which is our total impressions for marketing and PR since the Wine Heritage District began is $4,673,567,818 impressions. And I will tell you this, before we started, we were under 50,000. So this has made all the difference in the world to have the Wine Heritage District for us. Moving forward, what happens next? We are just getting ready to start our petition drive to renew our Wine Heritage District. It will be up for renewal July of 2026. So we're really excited to start that process. We also are in the process of kind of working our way towards, our big dream is to be Wine Enthusiast Wine Region of the Year. We want to see Livermore Valley Wine Country on the cover of that magazine and make sure that everyone knows who we are and what we're all about. So we're continuing to partner with them and figure out how to make that happen. We will continue to secure marketing and brand awareness, not only on a local and regional level, but also on a national and global level, as I mentioned with our Global AVA. And just to continue to do our community outreach and advocacy with the state of California, the city of Livermore, Alameda County, and make sure that our wine country is sustainable moving forward. I'm really excited to share one thing from Wine Enthusiast as we talked about in the last slide. We were able, with our marketing dollars, to put an ad in Wine Enthusiast. The last two years, we've had four ads, one per quarter. And the last ad we put in, we received the metrics from Wine Enthusiast saying that our ad exceeded expectations on the Wine Enthusiast level, and we had 34% more impressions than was guaranteed by our ad buy. So we're really excited about that. Another thing that was exciting that I'll end with is we had a writer come in, and I'll have you go back, because I didn't memorize that quote. A writer come in, and they wrote in Parade Magazine, which is a very, very big publication. The title of their article was, "This Town Is Quietly Producing Some of the Best Wine in California, and It's Not Napa." "This quiet California town is gaining buzz for its incredible wines, charming tasting rooms, and laid-back local scene." So we are very proud to be known as Livermore Valley Wine Community, very grateful for our partnership with the city of Livermore.
And remember, last year, Wine Enthusiast selected Livermore as one of the top wine destinations that were holiday-themed.
Yes.
Along with Verona, Italy, which is a World Heritage Site, and Strasburg Alsace, which is where my family hails from, but Comar, actually, and Alsace. But recognized as one of the top 10 destinations in the world for holiday themes. Like the Hallmark community, we're coming up to the Hallmark Village next Friday in Carnegie Park. So it's all coming together.
It is coming together, and it's very exciting to be part of this community. I feel like we're a community that's not just giving lip service to the word "community," but we're actually doing it. And it's really exciting to be part of that.
Well, thank you very much. Any questions?
Terminology. What's a boutique winery? Because I have a friend of mine that they're going to, well, Tanuda, who says they're going to sell their property off, and they want to go to become a boutique winery.
Well, there's different definitions for different people. I think industry-wide, a boutique winery would be a winery that produces under 10,000 cases, is my understanding is the definition. It's much smaller. It's not a large-scale global winery. It's more of a smaller, I don't want to say mom and pop, but I want to say, you know, you're going to walk in and possibly meet the winemaker right behind the tasting room bar, or the owners are there. It's going to just be a smaller, more intimate-feel winery.
Livermore. How's the Wine Country Hotel come along? Is it anything happening with that?
One Country Inn or the One Country Hotel?
The one out there that...
The one, that's the One Country Inn, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we've heard from Michelle Boss, who is the person who owns that property, I believe. She was looking for investors. We did hear that it's moving forward, is my understanding. But as far as a current update on that inn, I don't have today's update. I do know that it's moving forward. That's what I know. You're welcome.
Well, one of the cool things about Tanuda is they actually helped a lot of the small boutique wineries because they were cellar-ing and barreling a lot of the wines at Tanuda. And that's where they were bottling them. So they really helped launch a number of the small wineries here in the Tri-Valley.
I think one other thing I'll just say quickly before, I'll say one other thing quickly before I leave. I know there's lots of buzz around right now that the wine industry is down, down 16% across the country. I will say, the Wine Heritage District has allowed the Wine Growers Association, we have not jumped up and grown 50%, but our Wine Heritage District funds have remained steady, and they have remained flat for the most part. And that's something that I can't say for some of my counterparts around the rest of California that has not had the privilege of being able to form a Wine Heritage District. And so we've felt very lucky and excited that the path that we chose really secured our sustainability.
Well, I'm doing my part.
You are.
Buying a lot of wine.
Thank you so much.
Any questions or comments? Great. Thank you so much. Greatly appreciate the, this is, it's the community coming together. And this is one of the reasons, the importance of the sewer line down Tesla, because it provides the infrastructure that's going to support the wine region. So very, very important. And the voters overwhelmingly supported that.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, moving on to the open forum. The city clerk will tell people how they can participate.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the city council in the following ways. For agendized items, the public has, excuse me, for the non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during open forum to address the city council on any item of interest that is within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. For agendized items, the public can address the city council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular business item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the city council, and the city council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comments when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. For consent calendar items, one comment may be given for all items on the consent calendar. If consent calendar items are pulled for discussion by the city council, a speaker will be allowed one comment for each item pulled for discussion and a separate comment for the remaining consent calendar. To provide comment, please fill out and turn in a speaker card found at the entrance of the council chamber. Speakers will be announced in order received. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced, and their three minutes will begin once at the lectern. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. And Mayor, there are currently three speakers for open forum. The first speaker is Donna Kabane, followed by Shirley Lewandowski, followed by Joe Lee.
Good evening, city council members. The city's consultant discovered elevated PFAS chemicals in the soil and groundwater at the airport. All groundwater samples exceeded PFAS permissible concentration levels. The highest PFAS concentrations were detected down gradient of the south hangar area. One of the forever chemicals called PFOS was found at an estimated concentration of 3,000 nanograms per liter, many multiples in excess of the four nanograms per liter, which is a maximum contaminant level set by the EPA. The city must submit an additional investigative work plan to the Water Board by February 2nd. The work plan is needed to define the extent of the groundwater contamination plume and to determine the next steps. In the soil taken from the south hangar area, another forever chemical was found to exceed screening levels for construction worker exposure. These sites require further investigation because PFAS detected in soil may indicate a surface release. Please address the following questions tonight. Under matters initiated by the council, will you agendize the geoscentic report and Water Board correspondence for a city council meeting in December? Two, how will elevated PFAS findings affect hangar development plans in the south hangar area, especially south hangar S-1? Three, will airport development be postponed until the required Water Board investigations are finalized? Four, Swift 100 UL has not received FAA approval. However, GAMMY 100 UL is approved and certified by the FAA for piston-engine aircraft. Will you direct the fixed-based operator to start selling GAMMY 100 UL for piston-engine aircraft at LVK as soon as possible? And five, has the hyperlink for the public to track noise issues at LVK been fixed? Increasing transparency about the levels of PFAS contamination at Livermore and discussing ongoing Water Board correspondence at city council meetings will improve public relations with residents. Let's work together to make a safer airport for all Tri-Valley residents. Thank you for your consideration.
If I could just make a statement, I want to make sure that nobody, you can sit down. Thank you. Nobody gets confused. The speaker was talking about contamination on the site. And then she was also talking about drinking water standards. Uh, no drinking water wells have been impacted here in Livermore. Uh, we've heard of a few that were impacted in, in Pleasanton, uh, not nearly at the level we're talking about here. Uh, but, uh, there is no groundwater, uh, contamination resulting from the higher levels that were found at the, uh, at the airport. Uh, it's polyfluoralkyl sulfanates, uh, is the, the PFOS, uh, and the polyfluoralkyl sulfanates are the, uh, the others. Uh, so, um, we have to be very careful that we're talking about groundwater, that we're not talking about drinking water. Ms. Lewandowski.
The next speaker is Shirley Lewandowski, followed by Joe Lee.
Good. Thank you so much. I'm Shirley Lewandowski, a long-term resident of Dublin. So good evening, Mayor and Council and Staff. Last year, the Dublin City Council voted to put Measure II on the November ballot. It amends a 214 open space initiative protecting Duallin Canyon in order to build an elaborate one and a half mile road with six to four lanes that would connect Dublin Boulevard going east to North Canyon Parkway in Livermore. It will impede through 80 acres of unincorporated open space, county land, with Dublin wanting to commercially develop along the road. This undeveloped pristine area serves as an open space green belt buffer between our two cities. This proposal, this proposed road is currently estimated to cost 160 plus million dollars to build. There's a, that's a lot of money to spend in only a mile and a half road. And just 15 feet below and parallel to it is freeway 580. Dublin's narrative for Measure II was very misleading and disingenuous to Dublin voters. How? Because the city failed to conduct a required environmental impact report before putting the measure on the ballot. Dublin voters weren't given the opportunity to know what the environmental impact of the road would be before they voted. This violated CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. I worked hard with many Dublin and Livermore residents on the No on II campaign because the city did not follow CEQA law. I am here tonight to thank the Livermore City Council and the city manager, Marianne Birch, for your excellent letters sent to the Dublin mayor and city mayor last year in July before the council voted to put the measure on the ballot. Your letters, along with many letters and emails sent by residents of both cities, were against Measure II's misleading narrative. Livermore particularly is against any commercial development along the road. Then in August last year, two reputable Bay Area environmental groups filed a lawsuit against the city of Dublin based on the lack of a proper EIR before Measure II was put on the ballot. It's been over a year, but good news. It came last Wednesday, November 19th. The Alameda County Superior Court finally ruled in favor of the lawsuit. Measure II is now legally invalid. It's a big yes win for the No on II. The city of Dublin can appeal, but we feel the judge's strongly worded ruling will stand. It's not often we people get a legal win and it feels wonderful. Thank you to the good people of Livermore for supporting Dublin residents win this battle. We've saved valuable thriving natural habitats, living in Duallin Canyon and the beautiful green open space between our cities. Thank you. Have a good evening and a great and safe Thanksgiving.
The next speaker is Joe Lee.
This is just my continued cheerleading effort to encourage city of Livermore to adopt more free software in its computing. Um, I thought it might be useful to review the four essential software freedoms again, um, and why they're important to the user. In this case, the user is city of Livermore. Um, I've excerpted this most, uh, mostly from an essay titled, What is Free Software?, published by the Free Software Foundation on the GNU.org website. Uh, freedom zero is the freedom to run the program as the city wishes for any purpose. Freedom one, the freedom to study how the program works and change it so that it does the city's computing as the city wishes. Access to the source code is a precondition for this. Freedom, uh, three, the freedom to distribute copies of the city's modified versions to others. By, uh, by doing this, the city can give the whole community a chance to benefit from the city's changes. Access, access to the source code again is a precondition for this. And I, uh, I miss freedom two, which is the freedom to redistribute exact copies of the, of the program so that city can help others. Um, so I'll, uh, a program is free software if it gives users adequately all of these freedoms. Otherwise it is non-free. While we can distinguish various non-free distribution schemes in terms of how far they fall short of being free, we consider them all to be equally unethical. Um, so I'll talk mainly on, uh, freedom zero until I run out of time. The freedom to run a program for any purpose means the freedom for any, uh, any kind of person or organization to use it on any kind of computer system for any kind of overall job and purpose without being required to communicate about it with the developer or any other specific software developer, uh, with any specific entity. Um, in this freedom, it is the city's purpose that matters, not the software developer's purpose. The city as the user is free to run the program for the city's purposes. And if the city distributes it to other cities or to other people, they are then free to run it for their purposes. And they in turn don't have to communicate with the city of Livermore or anyone else about their usage. The freedom to run the program as the city wishes means that the city is not forbidden, uh, or stopped from making it run. This has nothing to do with the functionality of the pro, uh, the functionality of the program, whether it is technically capable of functioning in any given environment, or whether it is useful for any computing activity. Uh, the freedom to run a program as the city wishes includes optionally, uh, to run the program, not at all, if that's what the city wishes. So there is no need for a separate freedom to not run a program. And that's pretty much all. Thanks.
Thank you.
That concludes open forum.
Okay. Uh, in that case, we're moving on to, uh, the consent calendar. These are typically routine and passed with a, uh, a single motion. Uh, I would like to just highlight, uh, we don't have to pull it, but I'd like to highlight, uh, 6.2, uh, which was, uh, about the proactive replacement of the water service lines, uh, in Springtown. Uh, this is, uh, water failures tend to be catastrophic. Uh, sometimes there's been a lot of conversation about, uh, water rates and, uh, uh, the, the, the costs of these, uh, the fact that we are going in and proactively replacing these service lines, that these polybutylene service lines, which were supposed to last for 50 years and, uh, they're not. So, uh, we're going after, uh, proactively to replace these. It's a little bit more expensive to, to go in rather than wait for a failure, but, uh, it's the smart thing to do, uh, because it, uh, uh, it, it fixes the problem before it happens. Uh, so just recognizing, uh, uh, staff, uh, taking the initiative on that, appreciate that. Uh, but with that, I, if there's, uh, any, anybody would like to pull a, uh, an item for discussion? Okay, 6.8, did you want to make a comment or did you want the, uh?
A heads up to Mariana about that. Just elaborate more on it so the public can hear what we're doing with that.
Oh, okay. Um, go ahead and make comment.
Okay. Okay. Um, 6.8, where, um, I just want, you know, to do a little more expanded report on it and what's happening with downtown E. So I know I got the whole report in front of you, but.
Yeah, we had the update, uh, the report last week.
Yeah. Well. Goes, can you elaborate a little more on it just for me then? Since I was here last week?
Um, yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Marshawn, members of the city council, this is your city manager, Mariana Birch. Um, we certainly can provide, um, additional, uh, details that, um, highlight the report that is in your packet. As Mayor Marshawn mentioned, uh, a verbal report was presented by LDI at the last meeting and, uh, they continue to fulfill their mission to, uh, activate downtown with a number of events. Uh, they also continue, uh, working with not only the merchants, but the chamber, uh, the city and, uh, many other organizations, including the wine growers to attract additional visitors to, to the city. And as part of your packet, uh, there's also an annual grant agreement that the city has with LDI for $90,000 that includes certain benchmarks that, um, they should be meeting and are in fact meeting. So I think those are the highlights, council member Barry Andrews.
Is that what they're doing down there when they're taking, they're breaking the arbors down? Is that part of that? I was over there watching somebody tear the top parts of the arbors down.
Was that the Flagpole Plaza?
No, it's just the white ones. I don't know what you call them.
Well, there were, there were the arbors at the Flagpole Plaza. Some of those were taken down and repaired.
I was looking about the ones over by the theater because that's where I was walking by.
If I may, uh, through the mayor, over here, uh, I believe that, uh, some of those trellises were damaged by trucks running into them. And those, you may have seen those being repaired.
Yeah.
And typically, uh, through the mayor, uh, the trellises would be repaired by city staff. So this is something that staff is responsible for, uh, not LDI. There are certain things that the LDI does. For example, they maintain some of the kiosks, uh, in the downtown area. Um, and as I said, work, work with merchants and a number of other programs, including, uh, a number of events.
Yeah, there were the trellises at, uh, Flagpole Plaza that had to be repowder coated. So that was, again, that was what the city was doing.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Uh, I'm not pulling any, but, uh, similarly I wanted to call out two, uh, lines in particular, um, similar to the water repair. 6.7 is a replacement of one of our trucks for, um, sewer, I believe, but maybe also water, um, an F-550. But, you know, those things are not cheap. They're big trucks. Um, we made the last one last 18 years and we're upgrading it to this one because it will be able to, uh, better deal with those big metal plates that we use during the replacements. So we are very, very cognizant of our spending, sometimes to, to a fault.
I had my pickup for 23 years.
Yeah, uh, yeah. And, uh, 6.6 is, uh, as we just had the beautification awards, this is the version for the city where we're tearing out, uh, non-functional turf and putting in new landscaping on some of city owned properties. So we're taking care of our own beautification.
Very good. Okay. If there's no other discussion on the consent counter, I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor.
Yeah. Oh, do we have a public comment? I'm sorry.
It's good. We don't have public comment, but we do need to separate 6.1 because council member Barry Antos wasn't here to vote on the minutes.
All right. But, uh, so, uh, is there any public comment on the consent counter?
No, sir.
Okay. So I'm closing, I'm going to close the public comment period on that. Uh, we will have, uh, uh, entertain a motion on 6.1 for the minute, minutes.
Move rule of 6.1.
I'll second.
6.1, uh, moved by Councilmember Dunbar, second by Councilmember Wong. Uh, any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, okay, that passed unanimously. Moving on to, uh, uh, 6.2 through, uh, uh, 6.9, uh, do I have a motion?
I move approval of 6.2 to 6.9.
Uh, second by, uh, for motion being by Councilmember Dunbar, second by Councilmember Varyantos. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed, extensions? It passes unanimously. Moving on to 7.1, the public hearing. This is, uh, this was continued because there were, uh, it was understood that there was, uh, um, an, an incomplete noticing, uh, of the, uh, the community. So, uh, we pulled it and, uh, we ensured that we, uh, noticed the community so that, uh, uh, if anybody had comments that we would get them. So with that, uh.
Honorable Mayor Marshawn and members of the city council, this is once again your city manager, Mariana Birch. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for explaining the reason for the continuation of this item. And the item 7.1 is going to be presented by assistant planner, um, Cam Purewell with assistance from principal planner, Ben Murray. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Marshawn and council members. The entitlements for your review tonight include a plan development, a subdivision and a site plan design review for the Abut Townhomes. The city council will be acting in its legislative capacity for the plan development and the quasi judicial capacity for the subdivision and site plan design review. The project site is located at the southeast corner of East Avenue and Delora Street. It's shown here. We have East Avenue to the north and Delora Street to the west. The project site has a general plan designation of urban high residential, which allows a density range of eight to 14 units per acre. Townhouses are common under this designation. The zoning designation for the site is planned development or PD. The PD designation requires the project to follow the default T4N residential standards. The proposed PD is compatible with the surrounding residential neighborhood and helps the project conform to the size and shape of the site. Existing uses on the site include one single family home and the site is surrounded by a mix of single and multifamily development. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing house and develop the site with 13 attached two-story townhouse units and one ADU. The project will consist of all rental units with one unit available for rent to very low income household. Unit sizes range from approximately 1,400 square feet to 1,900 square feet with the option of three or four bedrooms. Each unit will have an attached two-car garage, photovoltaic battery backup, EV charging options and solar panels on east face, facing roofs for all units. The development includes a traditional architectural style and neutral color palettes. The project design will enhance views of the site at the intersection. The applicant will reconstruct the curb, gutter and sidewalk along the project funnages and also construct a new driveway to provide access to the site from Delora Street and underground all electric and communication lines. The applicant will also contribute towards intersection improvements such as permanent traffic calming measures at the intersection. These improvements will be completed at a later date as part of a capital improvement project. And just to, uh, familiarize ourselves with this image, East Avenue is located to the left and Delora Street is located to the bottom of this image. And north is facing towards East Avenue. The project includes the following entitlements. The planned development would establish new residential development standards. The proposed PD conforms with the requirements of the general plan. The subdivision would merge the two existing parcels into one parcel and secure public improvements. Site access would be from Delora Street, located here, and meets all applicable city standards. The site plan design review ensures the architecture and landscape design of the project complies with city standards. And approximately 50% of the onsite landscaping will include native plants. Units one through eight have access to usable open space in their backyards. And units nine through 13 have front yards and usable front porches. The project conforms with the residential design standards and guidelines. Two existing trees located in the northwest corner will be removed prior to construction. A total of 22 shade trees will be planted throughout the site. The project exceeds the tree replacement requirement in the municipal code. Again, we have East Avenue located to the left of the image and Delora Street to the bottom. Parking is provided in attached garages at a ratio of two parking spaces per unit for a total of 26 parking spaces, as shown in orange here. Three guest parking spaces are included at a ratio of one space per four units, shown in green. And, uh, one van accessible ADA space is included as shown in blue. Uh, the traffic consultant prepared a transportation assessment and concluded that the project does not require a vehicle miles traveled analysis and the onsite circulation and site access are appropriate for the project. Additionally, the applicant has offered an easement dedication on the northern four feet of the project site, located here along East Avenue. The easement dedication would accommodate the installation of future bike lanes along East Avenue, following future study and approved design. The offer of dedication will remain open for 25 years and will automatically expire if the city does not build the future bike lanes and accept the dedication within 25 years. In conclusion, the planning commission reviewed the project on June 17th and recommended approval by a vote of four to one. Planning commission and staff recommend the city council find the project is categorically exempt under CEQA and direct the planning manager to file a notice of exemption, adopt separate resolutions approving the subdivision and the site plan design review entitlements, and introduce an ordinance authorizing the plan development. That concludes staff's presentation and we're available for any questions. And, uh, honorable mayor, with your permission, the applicant would like to make a brief statement regarding the project, uh, to the council.
Okay. Uh, invite the applicant, uh, come and speak.
Honorable, uh, Mayor Marshawn and city council member, thank you for the opportunity. Uh, we have been working with the planners at the city of Livermore and Cam and Ben have done a wonderful job. There is nothing I can say more than what they have described. I'll take this opportunity just to introduce myself and my family. Uh, I'm Dr. Frank Abud. My wife is Reema back there. Uh, my son, Dr. Stephen Abud, and my daughter-in-law, Nadine. Uh, we are Livermore locals. We moved here in 1996. My kids went to Sam Michaels on Maple and we like to stay in Livermore. And I think this will be a wonderful project. It will beautify Livermore even more. Thank you for everything you've done for downtown. We really enjoy it. And I think once this project is built, we can have a beautiful building and beautiful condominiums at the corner of East and Dolores and provide very nice affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to introduce myself, Terry Townsend. I'm the architect for Frank. I'm also a Livermore resident, and we're very honored to bring this project to you. We've had a great time working with Cam and Ben and the city staff. They've done an excellent job, and we look forward to receiving your vote on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any speakers?
Yes, Mayor, we do. We have four speakers. The first speaker is Mary Perner, followed by Marlies, followed by Alan Marling.
Good evening there, Marshand, council members and staff. I live in Vineyard Townhomes. My complex is immediately adjacent to thirty-five forty-one East Avenue. Our H O A board is represented here tonight. However, I will be speaking strictly for myself. I am not a board member. Thirty-five forty-one East Avenue. I, it sounded different tonight. I read that it's a point two-three acre property. And as mentioned, it's at the corner of East Avenue and Dolores. It's currently occupied by a three-bedroom cottage that was built in nineteen fifteen. So the cottage there is a hundred and ten years old, which is part of Livermore's history. Mr. Abud and his development have proposed replacing the cottage, as mentioned, with a, and they just described the apartment building better than I could. But it sounds as though the apartments will be spacious and allow for several residents per apartment. And yet there is a two-car garage and only three guests or open parking spaces. So that is one of my concerns. My concerns regarding this project include the following: again, parking. With so many bedrooms, the possibility of multiple vehicles is high. How will probable vehicle overflow affect the already full parking on East Avenue and Dolores Streets? Sidewalk safety. Now, they talked about the easement on East Avenue. That sounds good if the bike lanes are, are created immediately. Otherwise, we worry about sidewalk safety, as I know some of you people, and you know that I'm a big walker. I'm out there every day, and about twice a week, I almost get smeared. Because it's between two schools, so walkers like me and all the students on foot, bicycles, and skateboards, which are often motorized, flow up and down East and Dolores sidewalks during school, school commute and other times. How will all the extra cars, whether parked or driven, affect this dangerous situation? Play areas. Where will the complexes' kids play? No play areas are planned there. None are located nearby. Will they be coming into the Vineyard Townhomes? If so, how will that affect our maintenance insurance car bus? Bus stops, there are three. It's crowded in. It's an issue driveway safety with two driveways adjacent to one another. How are they going to turn in and out? I'm worried. Trees, those beautiful trees, I, I, it kills me to think that they might be cut down. Also, finally, lady of Kings here rose, reaching to the cottage roof, and about twenty-four feet wide is a heritage rose, probably as old as the cottage itself. And it's probably the oldest rose in Livermore. Your attention to these concerns would be much appreciated. Thank you.
The next speaker is Marlies, followed by Alan Marling, followed by Stacy King.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. I have some of the same concerns as Mary. I do live in the Vineyard Townhomes. I've been, I was actually born in Livermore, so I've been here forever. I have some major parking concerns, absolute traffic concerns, because going in and out of our driveway there, where they're also building a driveway, is already pretty hazardous as I go in and out of it multiple times a day. I think it's too many units for the space with not enough parking inside. I also have concerns that it will end up not being a two stories, as sometimes that happens with your planning here. We're told it's two stories, and then it ends up being three stories or more, or four. I have also concerns about, I don't want any other asphalt trucks or construction vehicles on our private property when they're coming to do any work on the property. I do agree, something needs to be done there, but I just think it's too much for that area. With the two bus stops there and so many children going to and from school, I think that it's going to be a hazardous area for everyone that's going up and down that street. People from the other townhomes that park, I don't know what it's called, but it's the other side of the street from where this will be, the other side of East Avenue, they also park on Dolores because they don't have much parking there. So I really think they need to perhaps put less units and some more visitor parking so that people do have a place to park, because it sounds like they're taking parking from East Avenue and Dolores at some point. And I think that's not a good practice for Livermore, especially for any townhomes. Not even townhomes, but residential homes in that area. If you couldn't park in front of your house, I would have a problem with that if I had a single-family home on either of those streets. I think that's about all that I had to say. I think I did mention the bus stops, are the bus stops going to remain? And I'm also kind of wondering, we were told before when they asked to use our townhomes as the entrance, they were told that they couldn't access from East Avenue or Dolores because of traffic, and they wanted to come in from our driveway, and we told them, no. There's too many kids that play there. We didn't want that to happen. There's already with Amazon trucks, everything coming through. It's going to be a dangerous situation, so we said no. So my question is, why is it okay now? Thank you.
Excuse me, I have one quick question. You mentioned two, you planned two-story developments going in as four stories.
Or three, the downtown project. I know that that's the downtown project where there were.
The Eden Housing?
Yes.
Okay, that was always four stories. That was never two stories, ever.
I think it was three.
No, it wasn't.
Like another one was added when, what, what I was reading.
It was, it was four stories, and there were originally going to be four buildings, but now there are two buildings.
Well, perhaps someone gave me wrong information, but I could have sworn I read because they didn't plan for the laundry that they were adding another story. That's some documentation that was.
It was four stories, because I've been there, I've been here from the very beginning, and that's one of the reasons I came back.
Then maybe someone sent me something that was wrong when all this was going around.
There was a tremendous amount of misinformation.
Seemed like a bait and switch, since they had so many variances that exceeded the allowable variances for building in Livermore.
No, I'm sorry. The problem was.
I read that in your articles.
There was a tremendous amount of misinformation that was published in The Independent, and that's what I'm speaking to.
I believe that was something that came from the city. Oh, can I address one more thing? Our notifications. Why were we not notified of this happening on East Avenue? Only one person that I know of in our whole complex got the first one, and this has been going around since June.
Okay.
I mean, we would have liked to have addressed this.
Yeah.
For tonight.
I'll ask staff to address that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Alan Marling, followed by Stacy King.
Mayor and council members, I am pleased to see that this is a multifamily and multi-occupancy unit replacing a single occupancy unit. Given the critical housing crisis in California, part of the solution must come from single occupancy residences in the suburbs, expanding those by building more units or opening up guest houses within those units. And I commend the applicant for making, amplifying this housing on their property and making use of it. I appreciate that this is infill housing rather than building housing outside, and no one likes the idea of filling up open spaces with more housing, and this is an alternative for that. And it is close to downtown and these bus stations, as other commentators have, have mentioned, and that's a key critical element of reducing congestion and reducing the need for multi, multiple cars per unit. So I do appreciate that it's right by public transit. It is, in theory, bikeable to downtown. However, those issues remain about East Avenue being pretty hostile to biking, and I hope that if you don't build a protected bike lane in East Avenue, at least you have a plan for where bikes are going to go down that way. I've heard other people say that it's safer to bike down adjacent roads than bike on East Avenue itself. If there's a dedicated plan, maybe even with maps for bicyclists, arrows on the street, bicycle lane going this way, I think that it's a worthwhile endeavor, and I hope that you or the planning committee will make a concrete plan for how a bicyclist can get from this area to downtown safely. I do appreciate that there's going to be solar on the rooftops and that rooftop solar will power these homes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The last speaker is Stacy King.
Good evening. I appreciate this opportunity to speak to the council. My name is Stacy Kane. I've lived at Vineyard Townhomes in Carrigan Common for over twenty-seven years. It's my husband and two kids, and have enjoyed the area, and I, I'm not opposed to high-density housing. I live in high-density, higher-density housing. I also have the concerns about traffic and safety. Because, as was mentioned, it was already a non-starter to have another entrance on Dolores, and all of a sudden we hear that that's part of the plan, and we weren't aware of even a discussion about this at a planning committee meeting, and maybe, you know, discussions earlier than that. So the concern is that there is a lot of traffic. Students are going to Livermore High, they're going to East Avenue Middle School, there are all the bus stops, there are police, police cars travel that route. It's a major cross street, Dolores is, as you know, between North Livermore with the little jog onto Pacific and then connecting to the major street, East Avenue. I'm afraid of safety as it is right now. I feel like there's too many parked cars. It's difficult to see pulling in and out. I realize we need all this parking because in our, in our complex too, we, we have a lot of people that have to park on the street because there's, you know, not enough parking inside. And we even have more available visitor parking than what's mentioned in this unit. I don't think there's enough space for another entrance that's going to be safely placed between the corner of East and Dolores and our driveway there in Carrigan Common on the north end. I'm very concerned about people walking and how dark it is. And it was some, there was something mentioned about traffic calming that's at a later date. We need traffic calming right now. We did get some good improvements that happened at the intersection, but there's just a lot of traffic and people drive fast. And there's nothing to slow people down. I'm afraid there's going to be a lot of accidents, a lot more than we have right now. And there already were accidents on East Avenue, just a block from where, you know, fatal accident from where we're talking about. So I'm concerned about safety. I'm not opposed to housing, but I would like to see some changes made. I'd like to see more safety on Dolores. Not just the measures about four feet added on East Avenue, but we need more space on Dolores, and I'm concerned about loss of parking that's already there. I'd like to work, you know, now that I'm aware of the issue, I'd like to follow it and see what can be done to make sure that this development is safe for everyone. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Questions first from the council? Questions? Comments?
Okay, can you elaborate more on the safety procedures you're going to put in or planning on it?
And so as part of the capital improvement project, you've probably seen the bollards and that are installed on East Avenue currently. The, the plan is, as part of a capital improved project in the future, to put permanent traffic calming measures. So that'd be a raised sidewalk that'll, that'll buffer cars from, from the sidewalk, and then also permanent bollards along the corner there on East Avenue.
Calming, I, I've been hearing that more. I was trying to think what's that means, pumps and whatever.
No, so the, the bollards and these traffic calming measures are meant to slow down traffic. So that's the purpose.
I know, I know the speed limit signs are just like, I guess people take them as suggestions. You know, thirty-five, they don't go, they're fifty. I'm not sure how we're going to enforce it, maybe have a few more police officers there once in a while to, to slow people down. But I, I know, it, it really does bother me, these traffic speed limits. To me, they're like a suggestion. Going down five eighty down to Oakland, they, they go by me like ninety miles an hour. I'm just saying, down, coming down East Avenue. I'm not sure how we can slow them down, sit by putting a few more police officers every once in a while, you know, I know we can't have them there all the time, but the word would get out, you see a few of them getting tickets.
Mr. Mayor, if I may very quickly, this is your city manager, Mariana Birch. We are getting outside of the scope of this particular item, but very quickly with regards to East Avenue. Traffic calming measures, as staff mentioned, there are a number of temporary measures currently in place with the bollards and narrowing the streets. But in addition, we do, do conduct traffic enforcement on East Avenue on a regular basis. We don't advertise it ahead of time so that we could encourage people to, to comply with the speed limit signs. So, so that is happening. We receive state funding for it, for those actions. But again, we're getting a little bit outside of the scope of the item, and I, I want to be mindful of that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunbar?
Sure, plenty, so hold on.
Make yourself comfortable, right?
Yeah. In my neighborhood, I pass by it all the time, so prepared, and my laptop immediately locks me out. I just, staff, can you confirm what you said at the top of this? Just go over the standard of review here for legislative for the P D and quasi judicial for the rest?
Correct. So the planned development is in the council's legislative capacity, and then the subdivision and site plan designer view entitlements are in quasi judicial. This is mostly administrative, I believe.
Yeah, so for the large majority of what we're talking about here tonight, we're really doing a review against the requirements as they were when the plan was submitted. That's, we don't get to make the requirements up after that happens, the P D being something I'll come back to. Can you speak a little bit to traffic and school impact fees? That'll kind of tie into how the rest of what we're doing really works, so each each unit pays a certain amount of impact fees.
Correct, yes. After the building permits are issued, each, each unit will have to pay for their school fees, and those will go towards, you know, the, the schools and the school district.
Yeah. And generally, that's done because we don't have the ability to do traffic mitigation on neighboring properties because they're not being developed right now. Is that fair to say?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Can you speak a little bit to the trees? You mentioned it very briefly there, but I, what I heard was we're basically replacing the entire sidewalk and some of the utilities that are kind of wrapped up in where the tree roots are.
Yes, that's correct. So the curb, gutter, sidewalk, and then also undergrounding the utilities, electric lines. So those trees will be removed at the northwest corner, and then also twenty-two trees will be replanted on the site.
We have a standard for replanting when those types of trees are removed. They're not really protected via historic, but they come with higher replacement standards when they get proved. Is that fair to say?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Can you speak a little bit about the concerns about the driveway? The traffic impact analysis, but not the V M T impact analysis, but the, the engineering review for the driveway itself.
Yeah, so the, the driveway, staff encouraged the applicant to work with the H O A, the Carrigan Commons H O A, to look at alternative access points. Unfortunately, they, they did not come to a consensus or an agreement. So typically, staff does not get involved in those private matters. And basically, the project is allowed to have a public access from, from Dolores Street, and that's what we have in front of us tonight.
Do you say that this is the lowest impact location for this type of driveway, given the site?
That's correct, yes. That's correct, yes.
Can you confirm that no, I, I think this is true, no parking is being removed on East Avenue today. It's all red curbs and bus stop where this project is being developed. Is that fair?
That's correct.
Okay. On intersection improvements, um, you mentioned traffic calming improvements, but, um, you can, can you confirm that the funds that are here and the traffic impacts fees more generally can be spent on also signaling improvements, so a better, higher detection, uh, sensor camera or any sort of smart detection system that might improve the capacity of the signal as well?
Yes, that's correct.
Is it fair to say that bulb bouts, um, if constructed in concrete would reduce the pedestrian crossing distance, which would actually speed up the intersection?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I already spoke to not, we can't really require developers to build somebody else's property or street safety, but so that's kind of why we can't build the bike lane right now. I do want to see bikes get off the sidewalk on East Avenue as, as Mary mentioned, but generally you don't have an access to require other people to build property. If the city comes up with funding to do so in the future, this easement helps us, um, to do so. Is that fair to say?
Yes, that is correct.
I can't speak to what's happened in the past, but this development is proposed at two stories and if they change it to three stories, they would have to come back to us, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Let's see what else I had written down here. Um, I didn't see a lighting impact study in this, but generally speaking, that's done at the permitting upstage where you would assess that all the lighting standards for foot candles at the ground are met so that it, it's likely that this would actually improve the lighting distribution on the sidewalk and driveways compared to today's layout. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Can you speak briefly, this was just because of the comment that was brought up on how we've done the city's inventory of historic buildings. We did this big historic building study a few years ago and designated the ones that were truly historic.
Yes, so the survey was done of historic properties in the city and this property, even though it is, it is an older, uh, building, there's been modifications done to the existing residents. So it, it's lost its historic integrity and it's no longer considered historic.
Okay, it is a, is an old building and we, we love them, but, uh, it's a different designation for historic preservation requirements. It's generally Lav's responsibility to cite bus stops. I don't think the one on East Avenue is moving, but the one on, um, Dolores is near Carrigan Commons and they would be fully able to relocate that bus stop sign if they felt it was necessary. Is that fair?
Yes, that's fair.
Okay. All right, I've gotten through my questions. I can move into comments if you'd like as well, but I can also come back.
Sure, go for it.
Okay.
You're on a roll.
I'm on a roll. I'm on my own thread. And now I have to pull them up. I've already talked about trees, uh, this parking requirements are met by this. That's where the quasi judicial part of this conversation comes in. We're not, um, the PD isn't really affecting the parking part of this conversation. It's really for the setbacks and the, the end unit. Is that fair to say?
Yes, that's fair to say.
So we're reviewing the parking impacts from a quasi judicial perspective, which is to say that it meets the standard that we have at the time of the application and that's as far as our ability to change anything goes. Is that fair?
That's fair.
Okay. With regards to the legislative part that I'm coming back, all the way back around to, um, that's the part that has our discretion. And it's fair to say that that is basically the setbacks from East Avenue, which is a little complicated because of the utility easement, but generally the porches are a little bit closer than we otherwise would require. Is that fair?
Yes, that's correct.
And then the reason for the staff's recommendation on the last unit is because T4N is really meant as a privacy protection concern to single family homes on the backlot and that doesn't really apply here. Carrigan Commons facing unit doesn't have any windows on that side and there's a driveway with some trees in between.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so that's the reason for staff's recommendation for the legislative part of what we're talking about tonight. So as I discussed with staff part of this meeting, the real conversation we're having here is between the units that we're talking about with those small exceptions and a twelve unit project that doesn't have the better, better architecture and doesn't have, um, the native plants that we are getting out of this agreement. Is that a fair statement of the trade-offs?
Yes, that's fair to say.
Okay, so that's really what I boiled this entire conversation down to is we're making a small exemption for the distance between the back building and the Carrigan Carden driveway for certain improvements. And if we decline those, we might get a product that is worse for the neighbors from architectural standpoint compared to what we've accomplished here, I guess.
Yes, that's fair to say.
Okay. The last thing I want to do is something that is not something that staff can control. As you mentioned, um, the neighbor, the HOA declined the use of their driveway. I did hear concerns about kids that maybe play in the driveway. I can't speak to that. I, I went out there and looked at the site, but I don't know how common it is on that portion of Carrigan Common versus other parts of the driveway. What I will say is that the city can't get involved in these HOA disputes. We try to find the lowest impact site for the driveways, but even from the parking perspective, to say nothing of any other perspective, I think it would be ideal to have that go through the driveway, at least from the parking perspective. Like I said, I can't don't know where the kids play exactly. Simply because having that driveway removes the one parking space where the driveway is, to say nothing of anything else. So I, I can't force you to do anything, um, but that's kind of the trade-off that's presented here. And, um, it's really more of the HOA's decision, um, in that unit. Is that, did I miss anything there?
Yes, it's a private negotiation between the property owners. That's correct.
Those are all my comments. Thank you.
Customer Wong, questions, comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk a little bit about my thought process on this project. I have good friends who live in the developments on both sides of Dolores. So I've spent a good amount of time in that area and, um, since this project came up, I've had an opportunity to walk through that area with one of my friends and kind of heard the concerns and then went back when I read the staff report with those questions, those concerns in mind. And I did feel like they were addressed. I've, if, we can't say we're going to put even one house there and have it have zero impact or not be noticed. It, there is going to be some impact and I felt like in the report there, a, a lot of these concerns were studied by experts. We have public safety people, um, address, you know, fire or police act, um, how we would handle those. We had, uh, the, the traffic engineers look at it. I, I felt like real experts on all of these things examined it and have come up with ways to try to minimize the impact and make it safe. We're not going to build something that's, that's going to make an, an area not safe. And some of the issues are existing before we've built anything and this will be part of addressing some of those. I mean, we've talked about, you know, future capital improvement projects will, will address existing things now before this has been built and, and definitely the added impact of thirteen more units. And so I do feel like we're doing the best we can to address it. We need housing, infill housing is very important. People don't want us to build taller buildings and, and stack more housing in Livermore. People don't want us to push out and build out. And so we, you know, we, we need more housing and it has to go somewhere. This is relatively low density, um, and a, a very underutilized lot. And I think it's going to look beautiful there. It's very needed. It's close to transportation and restaurants and it's close to parks. I mean, kids can very easily be walked to, you know, down to this area where we have open space or, um, the Robert Livermore Community Center. And so I, I feel like this is a very reasonable project to put there. And so I, I appreciate all the, the work from staff to look into all of what the impact is going to be and to make it a safe and, and good project for that, that location. So I appreciate that.
There were some questions about the notification. People said that, uh, they did not receive notification. Could you elaborate on that?
Yes, the original public hearing notice for the October twenty-seventh meeting only included a three hundred foot radius. So because of that, some of the residents in Carrigan Commons were cut off from, from the, from the notice. Uh, in response to that, we increased the radius, uh, to five hundred feet and included all of the units in Carrigan Commons and thus the meeting was moved to tonight. So going forward, we'll make sure if there's any residential, uh, projects that are for the council that those projects are noticed to those, uh, or if they're adjacent to any residential or townhome developments, that the whole development is noticed and increase the, the radius to five hundred feet.
Okay, so the, the city sent out the notices. They might not have been read, but we sent them out to the, to the addresses that would be impacted.
That is correct.
Okay. The, uh, heard the building was not, is not historic as it was modified. The, uh, the, is, is the B, the below market rate unit, is that the ADU?
No, it, it will be a regular unit. It will not be the ADU.
Okay, um, normally ADUs are detached, uh, but it looked like everything was attached.
So you can have a combination. You can have a detached ADU or an a, uh, attached ADU or you can also have a, a JADU. Uh, so for this project, it's an attached ADU.
Okay, yeah, because it, normally when you see an ADU, it's in somebody's backyard. It's, it's almost like they, uh, figured we're going to build this thing and we'll just add another unit to this and we'll call it an AD, ADU.
Yeah, the new, uh, ADU laws have made it more flexible for multifamily developments to include ADUs.
It made it more difficult for the city, but it makes it easier for the, uh, for the developers. And this, and I'm, I'm still trying to keep track of these things because to me, an ADU is like a small cottage, you know, tucked in the backyard. Uh, I'm seeing two-story ADUs now. Right, you know, overlooking somebody's fence. So to me, I'm still getting used to, to the, the changes in the state law. These aren't locals. These are, this is, uh, uh, state law that we're required to, uh, to abide by. Okay. So at the other end of, uh, uh, East Avenue, uh, at East Avenue and Vasco, there was also a heritage rose that had been there forever. Uh, and we actually specifically worked to, uh, to protect that rose. We actually, you know, dug it up and then, then brought it back. Have we done any research on this, this potential heritage rose, uh, in this site?
This is Paul Spencer, Assistant City Manager. No, sir, we, we had not been made aware that this rose was heritage or required any special treatment. We can take a look to see if it could be replanted, but, uh, we have not investigated it.
Okay, um, for me it's worth a question. Uh, yeah, it's some, if, if something's been around for a hundred and fifteen years, yeah, let's see if we can, you know, keep it around for another hundred and fifteen years. So it, it, it just, you know, if you could ask the question and, uh, uh, if it's feasible. But, uh, uh, that would be something that I think that would, uh, that, that preservation aspect of it, because it looks like we've got fairly little control, uh, over what's what the, what the city has, uh, uh, the ability to control here. So, uh, uh, there's an opportunity to, to preserve something, uh, then, then let's look at it.
We'll work with the applicant to see what we can do.
Dr. Abud, yeah, okay. You heard the question. Okay. Okay, uh, Councilor Barrientos, any further questions or comments? Pardon me? Okay, uh, okay, uh, is there any further discussion, any comments, uh, Councilor Dunbar?
Well, I just had one note that I was reviewing and, uh, I just wanted to follow up on as well that there was this comment about play areas for kids. I know we have in-lu fees for certain, so this development meets the open space and, uh, private and public open space requirements for a lot of this size, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
At what general size, if you could estimate it, does like a, an onsite tot lot really become something that we would require? I think it's fair to say it's higher than thirteen units on a per square foot basis of open space requirements.
Yes, that's fair to say.
So they will be paying some sort of fee for the, if they're short on the open space per unit that is required, they would pay some fee that allows LARP to go build additional park space throughout town. Is that fair?
That's fair.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and, uh, so it, it was mentioned the, the parking requirements, those, uh, uh, meet the standards that, uh, that are set before us?
Yes, the project meets the parking requirements that are set before us.
Okay, well, great. Thank you very much. Uh, so with that, if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move through all of the staff recommendation with the, um, hope that the rose is replanted.
I'll second.
Okay, uh, motion made by Councilor Dunbar, second by Councilor Wong. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? It passes unanimously. Thank you very much for your comments tonight. Uh, I think that this, uh, can be a good project and I think that there'll be continued, uh, dialogue on this, so, uh, look forward to, uh, bringing together a project that'll be the benefit for the community. Thank you. Thank you very much. So with that, uh, moving on to, uh, matters initiated and, uh, council reports. There's no matters for consideration. Councilor Dunbar?
I wrote some things down, but I'm, um, I missed the, uh, Chamber of Commerce, uh, meeting that Vice Mayor Branning and I went to and then we both scooted away a little early to go to a Lavlima board meeting.
That was the, the mixture.
Yeah, the mixture, thank you. So I'll just add that one on there. The cost model, I just wanted to update that the cost model for installation on the DSRSD site for solar is, uh, looking fairly good. Some estimates, uh, still coming in, but, um, good progress there.
Councilor Wong?
I just want to highlight two things that I, um, submitted in my report. One is the, we, several of us attended the ribbon cutting for the Tri Valley Counseling Center, which I'm really excited about because I know from my time on school board, this is really needed. They provide counseling for children of all ages and I know this is really needed in our community. So I'm very happy to see that open and they have capacity and, um, they work on reduced rates in the sliding fee scale to make this work for everyone. Um, and then I also had a really fun opportunity for me to go speak to, um, Katrina Miranda's public law class at Los Pizitas College. You know, that's my favorite thing when I get to work with young people and we had, it, it was really great. They wanted to know about how law is passed at the local level and how it impacts local businesses. So I had a really great time with that.
Councilor Barrientos?
Hey, anything you want to highlight is, um, the turkey drop. When I heard you were there, right before me.
Yeah.
So I, um, Moni said they got two hundred and ninety, twenty-nine turkeys.
Two hundred and twenty-nine?
And four thousand bucks in cash. And we bought over ten turkeys. These were featherless turkey.
I think that's remarkable, the way the community steps up.
Yeah.
Uh, and you see this line of cars of people bringing in turkeys and, uh, and cars. So I'm very proud of the way the community steps up to, uh, to help those that are in need. It's very special.
I saw it on the local news. It was really cool.
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, Kalin Larson retired. Uh, I mean, she's been, uh, tremendous. I mean, I, I was on boarded by Kalin twice. And, uh, but she's been, uh, but one of these stalwarts in, in human resources that, uh, uh, she will be greatly missed. Not just her and her baking, but, uh, but her, her, always her pleasant, uh, countenance around, uh, around City Hall. Also, we had the ribbon cutting for, uh, a flagpole plaza. A lot of excitement about that and, uh, we've got additional cameras down there for, uh, awareness, our police awareness. A lot of excitement about that and we've got additional cameras down there for awareness, our police awareness center. And better lighting. So it's, it's really, that was very exciting to ribbon cut, have the ribbon cutting down there. And also our citizens' police academy had a 44th graduation. And this is a great opportunity to learn how the police department works. You get a chance to look behind the curtain and see that this all doesn't happen by accident. We have the virtual training system and also our, as I mentioned, the real time awareness center. Great opportunity. And then a lot of the people that go through the program actually come back and serve as volunteers for this community. So great program and it's free. It's about a 12 or 13 week program, I think. And it's just everybody I know that has gone through it just loves it. So we're opening up a new class. So if you're interested, come on out and then sign up for it. With that, there being no further business before the city, the meeting is adjourned.